This is the Village Around Lake Beach Council Meeting for April 18th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. Clerk, can we have the roll?
Trustee Husk?
Here.
Trustee Davis?
Here.
Trustee Valdez?
Here.
Trustee Cleveland?
Here.
Trustee Abara?
Here.
Trustee Stout?
Here.
Mayor Nichols?
Here. All right, for the, for the record, we do have a quorum tonight. Also in attendance is Clerk Hilsheim, Attorney Scott Puma, Administrator Rooney, Director of Public Works, Scott Hiltz, Interim Director of Finance, Susan Griffin, Chief of Police Gil Rivera. Yep, can we stand for the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Approval of the agenda tonight, any corrections or anything noticed? Hearing none, can I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Husk, motion, second. Trustee Valdez, all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Motion carries. Approval of the council meeting minutes from March 21st, 2022. Anything noticed on that, or is everything corrections, no corrections to be noted? Can I have a motion in a second, please? So moved by Trustee Cleveland. Second by Trustee Abara. All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have that as well, motion will carry. Approval of expenditures for $738,846.47. We have all gone through the expenditures, but Susan, if you could, just a moment?
I just wanted to note that we only have one bill, which always we have every month, the, that's over a hundred thousand, the healthcare bill. The village has been doing more via ACH and wire as it's more convenient and we can be assured that the bills will be, the monies will be there on time. We're starting to pay some of our bond payments via wire and loan payments to the IEPAs. So I just wanted to kind of let you know about that. It still goes through the normal accounts payable system, but we'll pay them via ACH rather than check to eliminate the possibility of check fraud on some of those very significant items. Other than that, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Anyone, any questions? Again, we have, all had this over the week to take a look at. Can I get a motion and a second on the expenditures, please? So moved by Trustee Davis, second by Trustee Stout. And a roll call vote, please. Sorry.
I'm used to saying voice vote at the beginning, okay. Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Abara?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
All right, ayes have that as well, motion will carry. We have no ratifications tonight. Don't believe we have any committee of the whole reports, any trustees have any questions or comments tonight? Going on to the mayor's report, and just a moment, do you have the? Sorry. Let me just a minute, folks, do you have the telecom winners, telecommunications? The information for these to read? We're missing a couple pieces of paper, so give us just a minute here. Proclamation, there we go? Yep.
Public safety?
Public safety, telecommunications, and then work zone safety should be the next one.
National Public Safety. National Public Safety.
Telecommunicators Week.
Work Zone Safety.
Work Zone, yep, so we have the two, you're good. So clerk, if we could, we'll have you read the National Telecommunicators Week for 410 proclamation.
Okay. National Public Safety Telecommunicators, Telecommunicators Week, April 10th, 16th, 2022. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that occur, that recur, require police, fire, or emergency medical services, and whereas, when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and pers- preservation, perserv-ation of property, perser-? Preservation of property. And whereas, the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone or text the SenCom Emergency Communications Center, and whereas, public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services, and whereas, public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety, and whereas, public safety telecommunicators of SenCom have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients, and whereas, each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and board of trustees of the Village of Round Lake Beach declares the week of April 10th through the 16th, 2022, to be National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Round Lake Beach, in honor of the men and women who, whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe, passed this April, April 18th, day of April, 2022.
All right, thank you, and if we could also, we have the Work Zone Safety Awareness Week for 411 through 415 proclamation.
Declaring April 11th through the 15th, 2022, as Work Zone Safety Awareness Week in the Village of Round Lake Beach, whereas, the Round Lake Beach Public Works Department, Lake County Department of Transportation, Illinois Department of Transportation, Illinois Tollway, Illinois State Police, and highway workers throughout Illinois are committed to reducing crashes and fatalities by improving the safety of our state's work zones and educating the public about laws that make work zones safer. And whereas, the Round Lake Beach Public Works Department, Lake County Department of Transportation, the Illinois Department of Transportation, Illinois Tollway, and Illinois State Police, while maintaining the safety of the state highways, are regularly exposed to the dangers presented by work zones, and whereas, Illinois sees an average of more than 6,000 work zone crashes a year resulting in over 1,600 injuries, and whereas, preliminary data indicates 25 people were killed in Illinois work zones in 2021, and whereas, the Round Lake Beach Public Works Department, Lake County Department of Transportation, the Illinois Department of Transportation, Illinois Tollway, Illinois State Police, and industry partners come together each spring to call attention to work zone safety and raise awareness, asking motorists to help improve safety by making safer choices when driving through the work zones, and whereas, this initiative aligns with the 2022 National Work Zone Awareness Week, which runs April 11th through 15th, the 15th, with the theme, "Work Zones Are Assigned to Slow Down, to Change Behavior and Save Lives." Now thereas, it is resolved by the mayor and the board.
Thank you very much. All right, clerk's report, is there a clerk's report tonight?
No, there isn't.
All right. We do have a public hearing tonight, I now call this public hearing in order to discuss the village budget for fiscal year ending 2023. Susan Griffin, our interim finance director, will take over.
Good evening, I appreciate your time. This is a presentation on the fiscal year 2023 but, proposed budget. This was noticed in the Lake County News-Sun on April 8th, and also posted on the village's website, as well as the preliminary budget document was made available on the website at that time as well. During the committee meetings that we held a few weeks ago with the trustees, Mark and I, and also with the mayor, we discussed and went through the detail of these amount, of this preliminary budget. Why is it not moving? Oh. There's a little delay there, okay. Some of the challenges this year, putting this budget together, was that we saw a lot of revenue sources, saw a large impact in FY21, a lot of sources went down. However, grants such as the CARES Act that we received in FY21, and then the American Rescue and Recovery Plan monies, also known as ARPA, helped to minimize that, those additional costs resulting from the pandemic-related expenses. The ARPA grant, amount of 3.68 million, will be used for non-recurring expenses that serve the greater community, things that we have discussed with you and will be presenting in the future, emergency sirens for Round Lake, worked on the Round Lake Lake itself, the Civic Center interior and exterior improvements, general HVAC upgrades to village buildings. We also implemented a COVID, employee COVID vaccine incentive, and our vaccinated employee rate went from 20% to nearly 80% of the employees. Oh, one of the things we're keeping our eye on is the fact that the general fund expenditures are increasing at a more rapid pace than the revenues, but for these grant revenues that we've received, ARPA and COVID, the village's fund balance would not necessarily look as good as, as it does right now. And I've also got a few other items there, the personnel cost, pension obligations, obviously those are significant component of the expenditures, and uniquely, the village is, not unique that they're reliant on sales tax, but that they're reliant on sales tax to the point that it's 21% of revenues and property taxes are 10% of revenues, so interesting, unique situation among many of our peers. The budget highlights here are, it's a balanced budget in the operating funds, including use of excess reserves, grant monies, as I discussed, and the bond proceeds. The village just issued the 2022 bonds in April, and we used about 1.5 million of that to refund the 2010 taxable zone bonds, and the balance of that is, of that 9.8 million is going to be used for capital projects, predominantly transportation. One of the things would kind of, which is, leads me, I guess, also to the capital revenues budget of 12.4 million dollars, that's the largest dollar amount for projects that, at least for the last five years, that I, I noticed. And the village's reserve policy, while the reserve policy actually says that it's, we should have 65% of the revenues, we're anticipating that will be at about 60% at the end of FY23, but we'll see if that plays out, and we've also talked about modifying that financial policy so that it reflects more accurately what you need to really retain for unanticipated emergencies, while making sure that you're spending money as needed to repair and maintain infrastructure. We did increase the staffing from 75 to 79 positions, two of those positions have been filled in FY, the second half of FY22, the year we're in, and two of those positions will be filled in FY23, one being a budgeted position for a future deputy village administrator, and the other one is for the, let me just double check and confirm, yeah, Economic Development Director, that position, for some reason, was not budgeted in FY22's budget, and we did wind up having a contractual employee for a period of time, but we anticipate filling that with someone, a non-contractual, an employee. On that, so, let's go to the next slide. All the funds are not showing up, here we go, it's doing it in kind of a delayed fashion here, so it may be a little tight to see, but the operating funds, the total is 24,686,000. The general fund and the water and sewer fund are the two most significant funds, they're called, what we call major funds. Proprietary funds are all, and enterprise funds are always going to be a major fund, and your general fund's always going to be a major fund. The other funds sometimes wind up being major funds, depending ultimately on their ultimate expenditures at the end of the year. Capital, as I discussed, is 12.4 million, split between 7.248 million for the general fund, water and sewer is 2.937 million, and the rebuild Illinois grant monies, some of which we got last year, some of which we'll get this year, of 1.5 million. Just keep going here, oh, on MFT, we're going to spend about 400,000 on that, I believe that's mostly engineering for the projects that'll be done in the subsequent year, the design engineering, and then TIF has 302,000 dollars expenditure in there as well. Yep, housing has nothing. Replacement Fund, the village has two replacement funds, the equipment replacement fund, that's where the leasing payments come out of, and the asset fund, and those are, that's software and building expenditures, so that's, that's all in, in that fund. The, next is the debt service, and it's 2,190,000, slightly down from last year because of the fact that we are refunding the one bond, and the payments on the, on the 2010 bond, the payments on the 2022 bonds will be kind of ramping up a little bit in a couple years, first few years, we only pay interest on those. One thing to note, wanted to, to let, to remind people who are watching, that the village, that this debt is all general obligation, which means it's actually on, can be taxed on the tax bills, this village has determined to not levy, so they abate those taxes every year, so that's 2,000 dollars every year, or slightly more, that is not on the residents' tax bills, that gets financed through normal operating expenditures. This total budget, whoop, is 40,425,000, that's about 10,000, 10 million, excuse me, more than last year, but again, it's really due to the expenditure of the bond proceeds and the ARPA monies for capital projects. This is a gra, or a chart, pie chart, showing the revenues by all categories, and as I had talked about a little bit earlier, the, whoop, just has a mind of its own there, the property tax, up in the top right corner, property tax levy, you can see is about 10% of the total revenues, which are 34,213,000, sales tax and, all right, stop that, sales tax and other related home rules, sales tax, local use tax, is 21%. Those are really the biggest, biggest amounts, the transfers in is shown here, that actually isn't really revenue, we show it because it is, it offsets expenditures to the exact same amount, it's really exactly what it says, it's transfer from other funds into other funds, so it's just all internal, it's not a separate source of revenue for the village. I think that's it for that one. I'm sorry, these slides. The salaries and benefits are pretty typical with most municipalities, as we're not making a product, we're a service-oriented business, salaries and benefits are 29%, or the highest percentage of the total 40 million dollar budget. Okay, we're just, it's, my laptop is, I don't know, kind of like the snow today, it's acting up. Capital outlay is 29%, that's unique, as I talked about, with 12 million in capital, ordinarily, that would be a much lower slice of the pie, but given the, the projects that the village has ongoing and beginning to, in the next few months, it is much greater than it has been in the last at least five years. This is a comparison of the major revenue sources shown, so it's not all the revenue sources, or excuse me, it's the general fund only, since that's the major fund, and it's a comparison of sales tax, property taxes, all the, the sources of funds, and you can kind of see that the local and state sales taxes, interestingly, went up from around 11 million to about 13 million, I'm projecting them to decline slightly in FY23, I'm beginning already to kind of see a slowdown in some of the sales tax, and I, I think what people might first think is, oh, well, you know, prices are going up, that means we should get greater sales tax, not if people buy less, which is typically the response to inflation of this magnitude that we're experiencing. Operating, the general fund operating expenditures are 19,384, so that's 48% of the 40 million dollar budget, this covers all the expenditures for police protection, administration and finance, public works, and economic development. Salaries and benefits, the rise is attributed to the, the addition of those four positions over FY22 and 23, and increasing prices in services and commodities due to inflation, certainly fuel, fuel prices. One last thing on, on that slide, I didn't say the ARPA grant was, or maybe I did, 3.8 million dollars. The proposed capital plan is the, the road construction projects, updates to, to village facilities, we have monies in there for lift station reconstruction and well repair, pump repairs, continuation of our vehicle replacement plan, IT infrastructure update, updates, we also did expend significantly more money this year for IT, as you know, it was, it's been brought to you that we've got now an IT person here one day a week, Jake, and because IT is just such a critical component now of the, any organization, especially with respect to security, that our IT expenses went up significantly this year, almost double, equipment replacement and sewer line maintenance as well, and that would be the sewer lining projects. The last slide we wanted to end with was a slide that shows for those people, for most of the residents, but this is pretty typical, whether you are in the Round Lake School District or not, but this one shows people who are in the Round Lake School District area, and it shows, if you look on the, close to the bottom or midpoint on the right side of the slide, that the Village of Round Lake Beach, really, in total, between pensions and the village, the non-pension portion of property taxes, represents only 7% of the total property tax bill. The school districts are 63%, it's important for people to realize that, that, so, when you look at your tax bill, the village is very diligent, very conscientious, and conservative about raising property taxes, even though they only are 7% of the tax bill, and, you know, only 3% of those are, of your tax bill, and the money we get is used, goes in the general fund for general, basic services such as police protection, public works functions, and, and economic development. One of the things the village does do to offset expenditure side, because we can't always be sure that sales tax revenue is going to keep pace with what our expenditures are, we look at maintaining service levels and achieving greater efficiencies by privatizing some services, contracting out things like snow plowing, and, not that it, I, we won't have enough to plow today, hopefully, but a lot of other public works functions, and we collaborate with other districts, like the Round Lake Area Park District and the Round Lake Area Fire Protection District, they provide, Fire Protection District, and even Lake County, provide some services at a cost, but it's a lot less significant, we only have to pay as we use, as opposed to having people on staff, whether we, we have the volume that warrants that or not. So, just wanted to highlight that, and lastly, just ask if there are any questions or comments.
I just want to say that that was a very informative and well-constructed presentation, so thank you.
Right, you're welcome.
Anyone else have any comments or questions?
Just a, a good, good thing to point out is, is on this chart, that the village does all it does for the 7% of the property taxes, and even the fire department alone, who represents multiple towns in our area, the district, their, their percentage is higher than what we do, and we offer a lot more services than a single, a single service, not taking anything away from what they do, but when you look at the chart, it, you can definitely tell that we, we're doing a lot with the money that we're giving. So thank you very much for the budget proposal. And then at this point, I will, if there's no more questions, I will call this public hearing to a close, and we'll move on to the rest of the meeting. We're closed. Moving on to, we'll reopen our, our meeting at 7, actually, do you have to reopen? No. We'll move on to business item A then, an ordinance approving the annual municipal budget for the fiscal year 2020, 2022, 2023. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
So moved by Trustee Cleveland.
Second.
Second by Trustee Stout, and a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Abara?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
The ayes have that, and the roll call vote, motion will carry. Thank you very much, we'll move on to item B, a resolution approving an agreement with SICH LLP for audit services for a not-to-exceed amount of $36,000 in six-
for a not-to-exceed amount of thirty-six thousand dollars and si- uh thirty-six thousand sixteen dollars for FYE twenty twenty-two. I like the fact that we're on top of this. We're moving on. We're gonna have it done early this year. Um, so could I get a motion and a second for the approval to uh Sikkich?
Second.
So moved by trustee Abara. Second by trustee Husk and a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Davis.
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland.
Aye.
Trustee Abara. Trustee Stout. Trustee Husk.
Aye.
Trustee Valades.
Aye.
Ayes have that as well. Motion will carry. Item C, a resolution approving an agreement with GovTemp USA LLC for um payment for our interim director of finance, Susan Griffin. Um, this is an extension of the agreement. And can I get a motion and a second, please?
Okay.
So moved by trustee Davis, second by trustee Stout and a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Cleveland.
Aye.
Trustee Abara. Trustee Stout. Trustee Husk.
Aye.
Trustee Valades.
Aye.
Trustee Davis.
Thank you very much. That motion will carry. Um, thank you very much again, Susan. Uh, we love having you here. We'll move on to item D, a roll call uh for an ordinance approving a memorandum of understanding with Solstice Power Technologies. Mark Rooney?
Yes, this is a a deal that both the residents and the village does benefit from. But it, there is no mandatory sign up for the billing. There's no contract per se with the village. This is solar projects that they do with throughout the state and they get residents from various villages to sign up and get a net metering agreement. And uh, basically, it's about a hundred dollars for every resident that signs up in the Village of Round Lake Beach to the general fund of this village. But then it's a discount up to a hundred dollars a month and sometimes more. It doesn't affect our aggregation agreement that we already have uh that tries to search in the deregulation of electric, the grid, for the best prices for our power. So it it is one of those deals that it is as good as. And there's no, there's no cost to the resident or mandatory sign up. It's all voluntary. And upon the village, it's just a a forty.
We will get to see the letter that they're gonna send out beforehand and everything else as well, right?
Yes, we we can.
Try to make it as confusion less as prob- as prob- possible.
Yeah, it's, yeah, the key is it's voluntary and it's just a net benefit to all that participate. And helps promote solar projects to be produ- put cited and into production in the state of Illinois.
Alright, thank you. And can we get a motion in a second then for approving the memorandum memorandum of understanding with Solstice Power Technologies? Again, this will have no effect uh on anyone's bill or ours, but it will uh help, help benefit the community members and ourselves, but uh also by promoting solar use. So can I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
So moved by trustee Husk.
Okay.
Second by trustee Stout. Oh, sorry. Um, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Abara.
Aye.
Trustee Stout.
Aye.
Trustee Husk.
Aye.
Trustee Valades.
Aye.
Trustee Davis.
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland.
Aye.
Ayes have that and the roll call and motion will carry. Moving on to item E, a resolution declaring certain equipment as surplus. Um, administrator Rooney?
Yes, I I, this is something we do on a regular basis and I worked with uh attorney Puma to draft this ordinance to declare some of the recent computers that have become obsolete. And uh, they really don't have a a net value to be recirculated and put into another department. So we declare these up.
Alright, can we have a motion and a second then for a resolution declaring um certain equipment as surplus? So moved by trustee Cleveland, second by trustee Valades and a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Stout.
Aye.
Trustee Husk.
Aye.
Trustee Valades. Trustee Davis. Trustee Cleveland.
Aye.
Trustee Abara.
Aye.
Alright, the ayes have that as well. Motion will carry. On to item F, a resolution approving a contract with Fusion Entertainment and Los Chicos Del Five Twelve, the Sel- uh Selena Experience, for a not-to-exceed amount of twelve thousand five hundred dollars. Um, this will be for our um, uh, festival in October. I'm sorry, in August, the end of August, um, for the Elotes Festival. Um, can we have a motion and a second, please? So moved by trustee Abara, okay? Second. Trustee Cleveland and a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Husk.
Aye.
Trustee Valades. Trustee Davis.
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland.
Aye.
Trustee Abara. Trustee Stout.
Aye.
Alright, roll call vote, uh, motion will carry. Um, moving on to item G. Uh, a resolution authorizing the uh waiving of competitive bids and approving an award of contract to the Carpet Corner for a not-to-exceed amount of nineteen thousand one hundred and thirty-nine dollars. We did put this out to uh another bidder, another person who bid, but this was the the best uh, the best offer, right?
Yes, mayor. Um, we did get two quotes. Um, and um Carpet Corner was significantly less uh per square foot. And um, and this is for the gathering place in the Black Box Theater at Civic Center.
Alright, can I get a motion in a second uh to do the nineteen thousand one hundred and thirty-nine dollars, awarding the contract to Carpet Corner um for the both the Black Box Theater and the area outside of the theater? Um, can I have a motion in a second, please?
Mayor, on the action requested, it shows eighteen thousand two hundred and sixty-six.
No, total uh not-to-exceed amount of nineteen thousand one hundred and thirty-nine dollars. The total um is uh what the actual costs are, but just to make sure of overruns.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Five percent, yes.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your questions. Um, can I have a motion in a second? So moved by trustee Cleveland, a second by trustee um Valades and a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Valades.
Aye.
Trustee Davis.
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland.
Aye.
Trustee Abara. Trustee Stout.
Aye.
Trustee Husk.
Aye.
Ayes have that one as well. Motion will carry. Item H, a resolution approving the contract um with for environmental mosquito management program, not-to-exceed amount of forty-two thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars for fiscal year ending of twenty twenty-three. Scott?
Yeah, this is a contract we um, we renew with Clark Mosquito every three years. Um, they do the village's mosquito abatement, including all the surrounding communities in Lake County. Um, they also take care of special events when needed.
Alright, and it is, it is nice 'cause by using the same company and better the bid, but uh also because of the fact that they time it to all the areas being done at the same time, so it's more effective. Um, can I get a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
So moved by trustee Husk. Second by trustee Stout. Can I have a uh roll call vote, please?
Trustee Davis.
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland.
Aye.
Trustee Abara.
Aye.
Trustee Stout.
Aye.
Trustee Husk.
Aye.
Trustee Valades.
Aye.
Ayes have that. Motion will carry. Item I, a resolution awarding a bid to Manival Construction Company for a not-to-exceed amount of one million, three hundred and thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars. Director Hiltz, uh, what project is that?
Uh, this is the municipal um campus improvements, which includes um additional expansion to the north that will be shared with the park district, um, which the next action item will be an IGA with the park district to pay their uh share of those improvements, including an expansion um to the east for PD and um lighting upgrades as well as uh security fence around um the PD um parking.
Alright.
And some uh, also some drainage improvements that correspond with um the SMC, you know, green infrastructure drain off.
Alright, thank you. It's a long time coming. The property uh definitely could use the upgrade. And the uh parking lot expansion, being able to team up with the uh Round Lake Area Park District to provide the extra parking will definitely be a bonus.
Yeah, also, um, I'm sorry, this includes the alternate bid to uh improve municipal way and add a turn lane.
Correct.
At Hook.
Thank you. Um, so yes, there will be also in this part of the um, on the contract on this one will be the turning lanes off of municipal way, which will help people getting in and out of the parking lots here on the campus, both for us, the post office and the uh park district. So that should help speed up traffic out of that area. Can we get a motion in a second, please? So moved by trustee Davis.
Second.
Second by trustee Cleveland and a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Cleveland.
Aye.
Trustee Abara.
Aye.
Trustee Stout.
Aye.
Trustee Husk.
Aye.
Trustee Valades.
Aye.
Trustee Davis.
Aye.
Ayes have that. Motion will carry. Item J, as we were already discussing, um, this is the inter- um, the intergovernmental agreement between the Village of Round Lake Beach and the Round Lake Area Park District relative to the construction and maintenance of the parking lot. The um, they will be sharing a portion of the parking lot expense, the roadway, the roadway costs and also sidewalks that are gonna be, um, which we didn't discuss, which will be added from um Hook all the way back to the Civic Center. So people will have a public walkway access as well. So uh, can we get a motion and a second then for the intergovernmental agreement for the cost sharing of part of this uh work? Motion by uh trustee uh Valades, a second by trustee Davis?
Could I just interject?
Ibarra.
Yes.
Could we just have the subject to final approval um of village attorney and up works director? Cause I I just got comments back from the district. We should have a resolve, I'd say by tomorrow or Wednesday.
So um, I just. So what we're voting right now that um, on the intergovernmental agreement, but that the attorneys are going to finish the paperwork tomorrow or in the next day or two here. Well, we always have to wait on the attorneys. It's the best thing to do, I believe. I appreciate it. Thank you, Scott. Well, so we will approve this um with the understanding that the attorneys will hammer out the rest of the paperwork in the next day or two. Um, and we'll move forward. So we have a motion by trustee Valades, a second by trustee Abara. And a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Abara. Trustee Stout.
Aye.
Trustee Husk.
Aye.
Trustee Valades.
Aye.
Trustee Davis.
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland.
Aye.
The ayes have that as well. Motion will carry. Business item K, a resolution approving award of contract to environmental technology for a not-to-exceed amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. Scott, I think this is um our fountain?
Uh, that is correct, mayor. This is the fountain um that will be installed uh in Hook Lake. It will add um a lot of water movement, some aeration and aesthetic improvements to the municipal campus. Um, this price includes um uh the electrical upgrades that are needed, the fountain, um additional LED lighting and a contingency based on um if there's any options or other um aspects that might need to be upgraded during the upgrade uh electrical.
Alright, um, so if we could, a motion and a second for the uh approving the award of contract to environmental technology uh for not-to-exceed amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. So moved by trustee Stout. Second by trustee Cleveland and a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Stout.
Aye.
Trustee Husk.
Aye.
Trustee Valades. Trustee Davis. Trustee Cleveland. Trustee Abara.
Aye.
The ayes have that as well. Motion will carry. Um, business item L, a resolution terminating the contract with Christopher Burke Engineering LTD.
Yeah, so this was an item that we discussed and approved. We discussed it in February, approved it, I believe, in February as well. Uh, Christopher Burke Engineering um started the design for the design build for the water main around the school. And um, so the original contract was for Christopher Burke. As they move into the design-build phase, it switches to Burke LLC. So um, we're terminating, since they don't complete the full design and um, we complete, we terminate the contract, we pay what we owe, and then it rolls into the credit for um the next resolution for um approving the contract to Burke LLC. Is that correct? Attorney Puma?
Alright, so this is a combination here, the next two. The one million, five hundred and sixty-one thousand, six hundred and ten dollars to Burke LLC. Um, and the amount that we will be paying to Christopher Burke Engineering will be the same amount as it would have been on the first.
Yeah, so the first approval will be just terminating and paying what we owe Christopher Burke. Uh, the second does include the sixty thousand dollars, I believe, credit in the, in the spreadsheet. So it'll still be the one point five six, or one million, five hundred, sixty-one thousand, six, ten.
Okay.
Cause they do include the um reduced design fees balance in their spreadsheet.
Okay.
Do it in separate, yes.
We will do these separately, but we, uh, the attorney has, has reviewed it and knows that the payments are in total the same.
This was contemplated, uh, it's been, they did the initial and were able to roll it into this design build. So it it's, this was contemplated originally with this work and are doing the right thing.
Okay. Alright, so a resolution, a resolution terminating the contract um with Christopher Burke Engineering LTD. Um, can I have a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
So moved by trustee Abara.
Second.
Second by trustee Cleveland and a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Husk.
Aye.
Trustee Valades.
Aye.
Trustee Davis. Trustee Cleveland.
Aye.
Trustee Abara. Trustee Stout.
Aye.
Alright, the ayes have that and motion will carry. Then to uh the rest of the, the story on this, the resolution authorizing and approving the award of the design-build contract to Burke LLC for a not-to-exceed amount of one million, five hundred and sixty-one thousand, six hundred and ten dollars. And I have a motion and a second on this, please.
So moved.
So moved by trustee Husk.
Second.
Second by trustee Stout and a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Valades. Trustee Davis. Trustee Cleveland.
Aye.
Trustee Abara. Trustee Stout.
Aye.
Trustee Husk.
Aye.
Right, the ayes have that as well. We'll be moving on to item N. Roll call vote uh for a resolution authorizing and approving award of contract to Peter Baker and Sons Company for a not-to-exceed amount of eight hundred and twenty-six thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars and thirty cents. Director Hiltz, what this project be?
Yeah, this um, this project was um part of our capital overlay project that um is included in the twenty twenty-three budget. Uh, we're using the Rebuild Illinois Funds and um we did get a good um result in our bid opening. And Peter Baker and Sons has done um work for the village uh for many years. And so we do recommend awarding the contract.
Alright, um, and this, this work is for the roads and sewer projects? Is that what it's?
It's um some sewer improvements, uh mostly road resurfacing and then some drainage improvements in uh Edward subdivision.
Alright, thank you very much. So if we could get the uh motion and a second for the eight hundred and twenty-six thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars and thirty cents to Baker and Sons Company, um, awarding them the contract uh from the bids. So moved by trustee Cleveland. Did I hear it? Second by trustee uh Valades and a uh roll call vote, please.
Trustee Davis.
Yeah, she said it right when I called. I apologize.
Trustee Cleveland.
Aye.
Trustee Abara. Trustee Stout.
Aye.
Trustee Husk.
Aye.
Trustee Valades.
Aye.
The ayes have that as well. Motion will carry. Um, we are at the section right now, open to public participation. Um, does anyone in the public have any questions or comments for the board? If you do, please step forward, state your name uh for the record, followed by your question or comment. Hearing none, um, we do have executive session tonight for probable pending litigation, land acquisition, sale of land, um, executive session minutes and personnel. So we will be going into executive session, everyone is dismissed, we won't, um, don't believe we have any, uh, any actions on the executive sessions tonight. Um, so when we come back, we'll be opening and closing fairly quickly. Um, can I have a motion and a second to go into, uh, executive session, please? So moved by trustee Valades.
Second.
Second by trustee Cleveland, all in favor?
Aye.
A roll call vote for this too, I'm sorry. Trying to help.
Trustee Cleveland.
Aye.
Trustee Avara. Trustee Stout.
Aye.
Trustee Husk.
Aye.
Trustee Davis.
Aye.
Trustee Valades.
All right, executive session, um, all right. No.